Good morning and good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Bonne après-midi, madame and monsieur.
Good afternoon.
Council meeting of July 9th, 2014.
City council meeting for July 9th, 2014.
Eyes for prayer, and we will not have "Oh Canada", as our singer was here at the prescribed time and had to go to work. So, Councilman Hume will have to invite back your guest.
Thank you.
Almighty God, let us work together to serve all our people. Dieu te puisant et de nous travailler ensemble afin de bien servir nos citoyens. prestige award. Susan began her career with the city's protective services 31 years ago. Since then, she has led policy shifts that have made the city of Ottawa a leader in many regards, from accessible taxi cabs to smoke-free policies, all the tough issues that you get to deal with, that have led to Ottawa having the lowest smoking rate in the province. She now leads an integrated emergency services team that serves the people of Ottawa exceptionally well in time of need. Susan is an inspiration and an agent of change for young women in her community. She was an instrumental force in establishing Camp Fit Female Firefighters in Training, which is the first of its kind in Ontario to provide high school girls with the opportunity to participate in frontline training with the hopes of one day reaching a more equitable gender balance in the profession. Susan has gone above and beyond the call of duty and inspires a new generation of leaders by mentoring female high school and college students, as well as an extensive network of young women who wish to build their careers. In her spare time, she's been involved in minor football and also volunteers by raising funds and supporting families who have fought cancer. She's an exceptional woman with a remarkable commitment to serve her community and the city of Ottawa. And I'd like to ask Susan to come forward. We're going to present you. It's very heavy, apparently. The award, it says, AMCTO 2014 Prestige Award, Susan Jones, CMO, General Manager, Emergency and Protective Services, La Ville d'Ataua. Felicitations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, senior management. It's an honor and a privilege. Frankly, I was quite surprised. I was told earlier about this presentation today. I know they wanted to keep it a surprise, but when my husband showed up at City Hall, that has never happened before. I figured out something was on, but just want to thank everybody around here. I've had 31 tremendous and great years as a city employee, had lots of opportunities to work with great politicians, great members of city staff, and appreciate, I think, day in and day out, when you get out into the community and see that we can walk into restaurants smoke-free, see that families can get accessible taxi cab service, and a number of other initiatives we've been involved in with the support of council and the leadership of council, that it is one of the great jobs to have, and I love what I do. So thank you very much, really appreciate the recognition.
Okay, Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Concierge Minette.
Present.
Councillor Blowis. Councillor Harder. Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor El Shantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egwai.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Concierge Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Clark.
Present.
Councillor Holmes.
Here.
Councillor Hawkes.
Here.
Councillor McCray.
Here.
Councillor Chineschenko.
Present.
Councillor Hume.
Concierge Blay.
Here.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Concierge Dorash.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Le Cadamet, ten mises de la main.
Merci.
You have the call, Mr. Mayor.
Adoption de process verbal le 25 juin 2014, carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt, done. Communications as received. Regrets, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports, motion pour ta présentation de rapport, conseil Thompson et Hume, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Your Worship. Move myself, seconded by councillor Hume, that Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report 43, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 45, Planning Committee Report 73, Transportation Committee Report 39 be received and considered, and that the rules of procedure be suspended to receive and consider Joint Finance and Economic Development Committee and Audit Subcommittee Report 1, subsections 23, section 29, section 3, and 29, section 6A.
Mr. Mayor.
And the Planning Committee Report 74, subsection 29, section 3, because of the urgency of the items contained in the report. Forty-two A. Waiver of the rules being requested for Joint Finance and Economic Development Committee and Audit Subcommittee Report 1, item 5 of the agenda, and Planning Committee Report 74, items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 of the agenda, due to the timelines, as the next regular council meeting is not scheduled until August 27th.
So councillor Clark, you had an amendment to the...
That Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report 42A has been omitted somehow.
It's not.
Oh, we've got that on deferral.
It's different.
So it's the next item.
Okay.
Okay. So on, the motion to introduce reports, carried.
Carried.
Postponements and deferrals, city council, June 25th, meeting to consider engineer's report under the Drainage Act. There was an issue involving some of the costing, and I believe in the interim it's been worked out, and councillor Moffett has a motion, seconded by councillor Tierney. Councillor Moffett, please, if you could introduce the motion.
Thank you. I know that municipal drains are quite often the most compelling thing that council does. Quite often, anyways. I'll get right to it. Whereas the proposed Arbuckle Drain is before council for first and second reading, and whereas the drainage works to be completed through the proposed Arbuckle Drain will address erosion concerns resulting from existing development, as well as accommodating growth subject to such growth, controlling stormwater flows, and whereas the developers are prepared to share the cost of the proposed Arbuckle Drainage Works with the city, subject to such share being capped at approximately 50%, $240,000 of the estimated cost of the works, $48,714, and whereas there is existing budgetary authority for the city to finance the balance of the works, therefore be it resolved that council approve that subject to Matami Limited, Richmond Village North Limited, and Richmond Village South Limited agreeing to pay 50% of the cost of the Arbuckle Drainage Works to a maximum of $240,000, the balance of the cost of the works be shall be paid by the city.
Okay, so staff are supportive of this. On the motion, carried. On the report as amended, carried. Next item is Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 43, zoning bylaw 2349 2437 Carp Road and 512 William Mooney Road. Councillor El Shantiri, I don't think this is a contentious issue, has an amendment, if you'd like to introduce it now.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you very much. Also, I'd like to direct staff, we heard earlier from Mr. Moser about question councillor Cadiz submitted at the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee. I would like those questions answered to be part of the minute of this file, but also, Mr. Mayor, there's a motion here. We're talking about where the zoning has a holden on, and I had asked that at the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee, which to be formally notified after lifting of the holding provision for the zoning of the West Carlton Environmental Centre prior to the mayor rising to city council. Therefore be it resolved that city council direct staff provide an information report to the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee with respect to a final resolution of the holding provision in respect to the West Carlton Environmental Centre prior to bylaw being submitted to council. Just to make sure, Mr. Mayor, the lifting after zoning will come, after holding will come to the committee and council.
Okay, thank you. So if we have speakers on this, we'll come back to it. Councillor, we'll consider is this a brief clarification?
Amendment to the motion, Mr. ... It says to the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee, it was supposed to be coming back to all of us that are impacted by it, and the West End councillors, and we're not all in that committee.
Okay, we'll hold it, and maybe you two can work out something. Okay, so we'll come back to that item. Item four, Orleans Town Centre Land Exchange to Preserve the Vinette Silo, échange de terrain de centre-ville d'Allianz en vue de préserver le silo vinette. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Development charges, 5207 Bank Street, 5207 Grou Banque, carried. The Orleans Town Centre Land Exchange, carried. Office of the Auditor General, audit of procurement practices related to the Source Separation Organics Contract. Carried. Item six, front-ending agreement for modification of the Gloucester East Urban Community Stormwater Management Pond Number One and Fish Habitat Compensation. Carried. Item number seven, Preston Carling District Secondary Plan, we have a number of motions, so we'll come back to that. Zoning Bylaw Amendment 93105 Norman Street, we have items on that, so we'll hold that. Item number nine, Official Plan Amendment 2405 Mayor Blue Road and 2496 Tenth Line Road, modification de plan officiel 2405 chemin Mayor Bleu et 2496 chemin Tenth Line. Adoptee. Planning Committee Report Number 74, application to alter 429 McLaren Street, a property designated under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act and located in the Centertown Heritage Conservation District. Carried. Item number 11, designation of the Horticulture Building, Lansdowne Park, under Part 4 of the Ontario Heritage Act. Carried. Item number 12, application to alter the Brentwood Gates, a structure designated under Part 4 of the Ontario Heritage Act, located at the junction of Beckwith and Main Street. I just, I don't know who can answer this. I wanted to know where are we moving the gates? Are they just being moved back in, and who's paying for it? Mr. Moser?
Your Worship, yes, they're just being moved back a certain distance. It's my understanding that it's coming from the road project.
Okay, so it's a visibility issue on Main Street, is that the issue?
Yes, I think it's because of the width on me.
Okay. On the report, carried. Item number 13, application for demolition of 565 and 575 Old Prospect Road is being held, councillor Clark. Item number 14, zoning bylaw amendment 375 Didsbury Road and part of 345 Didsbury Road, carried. Item 15, zoning anomalies and minor corrections, a portion of 1123 Old Montreal Road, zonage anomale et correction mineur partie de 1-1-2 chemin Old Montreal, carried. Item number 16, expenditure for upgrades to the Monahan Stormwater Management Facility, carried, thank you councillor Hubley. Item number 17, small moment study, Centertown, there is a motion. Oh, it's just, you're just wanting to receive?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move, seconded by councillor Holmes, that we receive this report.
Okay, on the motion, carried, to receive. Item number 18, comprehensive zoning bylaw 2008-250 omnibus zoning bylaw amendments, there's a new motion by councillor Blay and Blowis, I believe? Is it Blowis or Blay? Councillor Blowis. Is this technical in nature, councillor Blowis? Or do you want us to hold?
Well, it's technical on the one hand, but it's more than technical on the other. But if we want to carry it, I mean, everybody has it. Hold it.
All right, we'll hold, we'll come back. Item number 19, demolition of 207 209 Murray Street, carried. Item number 20, street name signs for private roads for Lansdowne Park, carried. Transportation Committee Report Number 39, temporary outdoor patio encroachment 225 Strathcona Avenue, carried. Item number 22, doubling of fines within school areas and school speed zones, adoptee, carried. Item number 23, St. Patrick Street Multi-Use Pathway Motion, and there's an amendment from councillor Fleury, so we'll come back to that. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? Councillor McCray on the bulk?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to remove anything, but I just want to acknowledge the good work staff did on that omnibus zoning report. It was a lot of work, and I didn't get the chance to speak to it at planning because it carried on consent, but I want to acknowledge Carol Ruddy and the rest of staff, who were just phenomenal.
Great, thank you. Anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented, carried, okay. All right, so we're back with councillor El Shantiri's motion, seconded by councillor Cadri, and I don't know if you've had a chance, councillor, to talk to councillor Wilkinson, if you'd like to introduce...
We did, Your Worship, and it's a friendly amendment, and to include and West End councillor Wilkinson and Hubley to be a part of the circulation on this.
That's a friendly amendment. On the motion as presented, carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On the motion as amended, carried. All right. The next item I have, Madam Deputy Clerk, is Preston Carling District Secondary Plan. We do have a number of motions, so I will go through them in the order I've received them. The first is an omnibus motion, technical amendments, and those motions supported by staff, moved by councillor Hume, seconded by councillor Harder. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll see that you have in front of you a technical amendment that changes some minor wording and incorporates a motion that was moved at committee with respect to an area-wide traffic study that was proposed, and another, a number of other minor motions with respect to bays water south of Gladstone, Champagne Avenue, Southern Beach, classified as local roads, and some other ones that were moved at committee by the respective councillors, were reviewed by staff, and are in agreement too, so...
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the series of motions that councillor Hume and Harder have put forward on, that he just introduced? So can we pass those? Carried on those?
Carried.
The next motion is councillor Hume, seconded by councillor Holmes on Adeline Street. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is, if I can have the attention of members of council for a minute, this is a more substantial, one of the more substantial issues that we'll be debating within the discussion of the secondary plan. Currently, and you'll see that staff have put forward a plan that takes the highest heights along Carling Avenue, steps them down, or transitions them down to a nine-story profile, and then transitions down to the very low-profile neighborhood in the core of the Carling, Preston Carling District Secondary Plan. And what this motion seeks to do is it amends that transition. And I think it's important to understand, this is a fairly unique situation in that there are no development applications here, so we don't have to worry about affecting potential development applications, as we do in other parts of the Preston Carling Secondary Plan. But what it does, and it recognizes a community concern about that transition, and they're afraid of a further erosion of the low-profile fabric in the community. And in a perfect world, I think we all would recommend and recognize that a transition from your highest heights to your mid-rise, to your low-rise is exactly what we want to do. But that's in a perfect situation. And quite frankly, we, in our strategic directions, have always indicated that that's what we wanted to do, because we thought that that was the best transition to have. Unfortunately, you know, the community doesn't necessarily see it that way. They believe that that transition, although probably from a planning perspective, and our planning staff will tell you, appropriate, is a, there is a fear, and, you know, I think it's justified or not, depending on your perspective, that the transition will lead to erosion of the fabric, of the low-profile fabric. I don't believe it will. I, I don't believe it will, in, in my own mind, but I think that this is an opportunity where we can say to the community, okay, we hear you, we understand, and we can point to a lot of examples in our own areas, and in my own work, I can point to, oh, any number of them where we transition from our very highest heights to actually single-family homes. So it's not unique what the, what the community is asking us to do. Staff, of course, don't support this. They believe that the appropriate transition and is, and from a pure planning perspective, they're right, going from nine, or going from the highest heights to nine, to four. But in recognition of, you know, the very unique fabric that, that we see here, the community is saying, yeah, we understand that, but we believe that, that, that we don't need that transition. See, it's nice to have, but we don't need it. We don't think in order to provide a buffer between our highest heights and our lowest heights, we need that transition. And I frankly agree with them. We don't, you don't always need that, that buffer, that transition. And because in our own communities, we see and we have examples of them where we don't have those transitions and the land uses function quite well together. So, Mr. Mayor, I would commend council to this, this motion, understanding that staff don't support, staff don't support it, and that we have been saying, you know, that the, the appropriate transition is to nine, but we need to recognize in some cases that, you know, the community has stated, you know, we really don't need this transition, and we would prefer that the fabric remain at a, at a four-story level. So I think that this is one of these, you know, rare cases, Mr. Mayor, where, you know, the community's come forward and said, although that, that change and that, that transition is nice, it's not something that's needed, and that they would prefer to remain, that that four-story fabric remain, and that we do away with, with that transition. They believe that that will better protect the interior fabric of, of four stories. And I would commend the motion to you and ask that you approve it.
Thank you. Councillor Holmes?
Mr. Mayor, I think what we're talking about here is the village of Little Italy, and that village is one block each side of Preston. It's a very small area, but without that village of Little Italy, there would really be no tourism area. There would be no closing the whole street for Italian Week. So the residents and the BIA are very concerned about protecting that low-rise characteristic of the village of Little Italy. And they're very strongly in support of the four-story because that is the historical village, and it's a very interesting mixed-use village with commercial and industrial uses in the backyards. It's exactly what this whole plan, this whole Preston Carling Plan is about, to bring about a mixed-use area. So it is very important that the four-story remain as much as possible in most of the areas in this, most of the streets in this area. And the Adeline example is a matter that the residents are very concerned about, the undermining of the four-story, if there's a nine-story situation on the books, and that it's going to create a lack of certainty in the area for people who have bought and who are planning to stay there. They want to maintain a four-story neighborhood. So I support councillor Hume and his recommendation, Mr. Chair, that that nine-story stepping down isn't necessary, especially when you look at Rochester Street and there's an eighteen story stepping down right to four stories, just to the west of the Rochester Street development. So that goes from eighteen to four, then why would we not do the same with the twenty and eighteen on Adeline? And there's a road between the Adeline height on the south side and the, the low-rise on the north side of Adeline, whereas on Rochester, there's no height, there's no street. It goes from eighteen stories on Rochester down to four stories on the next lot going west. So I, I think it's very important for the area, Mr. Mayor, that we support the four stories. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on this motion? On the motion as presented? Carried. The next motion is by councillor Holmes, seconded by councillor Clark on Norman Street. And just for clarification, because we have Norman Street on, as the next item, this, as I understand it, Madam Deputy Clerk would supersede that item if this is passed? What's that? They affect one another, yes. Okay, councillor Holmes, you're going to introduce your motion.
I don't understand what you just said, Mr. Mayor. It supersedes?
No, we.
Tim is waving at him.
Mr. Mark, if you could explain the impact of this motion to item eight, ninety-three, one oh five Norman.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Mayor, should councillor Holmes' motion carry, and I'm sorry, I was at the side, I'm assuming this is the one to go down to four stories?
Mm-hmm.
Then staff will have a motion prepared for refusal of the Norman report. So if it's it, it would require a further motion, though, when, when the zoning is front of council, Mr. Mayor.
So it, the, the staff motion would be required for item eight, which is the zoning bylaw?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, councillor Holmes, the floor is yours.
Good, thank you very much. I just want to talk about the Strategic Direction Report for a minute. We all remember the Strategic Direction Report and the discussion on the muse, and having talked to Mr. Mark, the Strategic Direction Report is a policy document for guidelines to guide the staff. It is not a legal binding report on council. And in fact, when I looked at the Preston Carling Strategic Direction Report and juxtaposed it with this secondary plan, there are at least eight items that have changed significantly, that the staff went back and looked at and comments in from businesses and community. Some of the changes include the nine-story along all the properties on the O train have been removed, and that was because this, the muse and the street has been removed and there is significant transportation difficulties. The location of proposed open space has been removed, has been changed, that a location that was going to be added to Evtromblee Park is now not going to be. The detailed design of the Dow Honda site has been significantly changed. We have an extra tower on that site. The mobility bridges, there were car and truck bridges over Hickory and Young, and they have been changed to pedestrian and cycling bridges. The various tower locations and heights, the maximum heights have been changed. The traditional Main Street designation for Preston Street between Adeline and Carling has been removed. The boundaries of the station area have changed, and there's an introduction of a neighborhood line. So these are all changes that have come about as a result of the staff going back with the strategic directions to see which of the directions would hold and which would change depending on the input coming in. So there is no reason for not changing the height on Norman Street because every other street that dead-ends from Carling to Albert is at four stories. So Norman is certainly the anomaly. And why Norman when every other street has been determined to, that nine stories is not acceptable? Well, one of the reasons is the transportation capacity. It's a very narrow street, it's seven meters from curb to curb, and with snow in the winter, of course, it's down to about five meters. So how do you get, at the present, you can't drive down Norman and get out of it without turning in people's driveways. So how you would get to the front door with a moving van is really questionable. So with, when George Dark recommended the muses all the way down that multi-use pathway, that was because of the transportation and parking access to the buildings that would be constructed if they were going to be nine stories. It's almost impossible to deal with from a transportation and access point of view. As well, the residents who back onto Norman, the residents on Beach who back onto that nine stories, that's, that, they are in little one- and two-story buildings on Beach, and they will now have, half of the, the block will be the nine-story tower, half of the block of land owned, that doesn't include Preston Street, but the west portion of that block that's going to be nine stories is going to tower over the two stories on Beach, and as well, there's, there's buildings on the south side of Norman that are going to face that tower. It's really an anomaly in this whole area and will really overpower those small residences that are in this area. They're very narrow lots with small houses. So it is a problem that we continue to provide the staff recommendation for nine stories in this area. This area, this south, the southern half or the southern third of this whole development process, has its significant intensification on Carling. Like, there are buildings thirty-one stories and over, depending on the market, they could be as high as forty-five. So this area is taking enormous intensification capacity. And then Rochester Street has eighteen stories, all down Rochester Street. So the community has said, let us have our intensification on Albert in the north, Carling in the south, Rochester in the east, but let us keep our four-story community housing neighborhood. And, and the report talks about the need for various different residential types of housing, and talks about affordable housing, and these small houses on these small lots are affordable and have been. So let's not undermine that need for family housing, low-rise housing, affordable housing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Shirelli, please.
I have a question for Mr. Mark. It's actually two questions. One is, what do you estimate our chances of, at the OMB, if we approve this report? Secondly, can you comment on the relationship between this report and subsequent approval of councillor Blowis' motion?
Mr. Mayor, with respect to the first question posed by councillor Shirelli, members of council will know that from past items that have gone to the Ontario Minister Board where staff are on one side, planning staff are on one side and council on another, council is successful about twenty-five percent of the time, and the other seventy-five percent council is not successful. So I provide that information by way of background. With respect to the second question, if I could confirm that the motion by councillor Blowis that the councillor is referring to is a motion that was adopted last year with excluding the muse? I'm not certain that that's, I'm not certain which motion he's referring to if it's otherwise. Would, I'm, then I, I'm sorry, which motion?
Does Mr. Mark have a copy of the motion? It's hard for him to comment if he hasn't seen the motion.
Well, he's seen it.
Mr. Mark, this is on a retirement home on seventy-five Aberdeen.
Mr. Mayor, I'm advised that there's not an approval in place for that one at this time, and if such is the case, that would not yet have a bearing on the, on this one at the Ontario Minister Board.
Anything else, councillor Shirelli? Anyone else wish to speak to this? Councillor Hobbs?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just wondering, again, I, I don't know if we heard the answer to the relation between making a change on the CDP and the separate stream where this has been approved already at Planning Committee. And I see Mr. Mark's talking, so just wait a minute.
Mr. Mark, councillor Hobbs has a point she'd like to raise.
Sorry, it was just in, in relation to what councillor Shirelli was discussing about the, the relation of, he was discussing in relation to another motion, but in relation to what the separate stream on this particular issue, as this has already been to Planning Committee and has been approved by Planning Committee, and I think you've explained that it would cause a refusal motion, but I, I just wanted you to explain further what, what that sort of means and what the implications are for council.
Mr. Mayor, if the motion to re-designate the lands to four stories carries, with respect to the official plan amendment, one would anticipate that, given that the zoning bylaw proposes nine and four stories, that there will be a motion to refuse that zoning amendment. And if that also carries, then one can further anticipate that such refusal will be appealed to the Ontario Minister Board. The developer has a private official plan amendment application that was before the city. It was not brought forward to committee because of the Preston Carling official plan amendment coming forward. I would also anticipate that the developer would appeal the private official plan amendment to the Ontario Minister Board.
Thank you.
Councillor Hume?
Further complications to this, but this is, we've made this, unfortunately, through our, our actions with the strategic directions, incredibly complicated because not only are the strategic directions giving support for the, the nine stories, council's approval of the, of the strategic directions, but it's further complicated by the existing OP and conflicting secondary plan. So, Mr. Mark, I mean, this implements the strategic directions document, but the evaluation of the next piece of the, of the zoning has to occur in context with the existing primary plan in place.
Mr. Mayor, I would differ from that just slightly. It has to be evaluated against the, either the official plan policy in place or the official plan policy as is proposed and is before council today.
Right. As was in place when they made the application.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. See, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's the, the real complicating factor here because you're, you're either going to evaluate their application in, against this, this which permits it, or the former official plan, which is much more permissive in that it designated, designates this as a mixed-use center where our highest heights and our bigger density is going. So a lot of what the Preston Carling District Secondary Plan does is it fixes that, but on this site, council has really only, in my opinion, two valid choices, and that's have, adopt this secondary plan as it's, it's proposed and evaluate the development application against that, or, you know, don't adopt that and have it, have the application evaluated against a much more permissive planning regime, which quite frankly could permit higher heights than is here today because it was a much more permissive regime. Unfortunately, we're not going to have the luxury of being able to test the zoning application against a much more rigid and constrictive planning regime such as we've just approved on Adeline Street. And so this is a case, and one of those, I mean, it's not unfortunate, but one of those areas where the, the choices for council, in my opinion, are limited. And what you have before you, in my opinion, is the best that council is going to do on this, this site. We, we have done, and councillor Holmes is right, we have, we have taken the time between the strategic directions and the, the creation of the secondary plan that is before us to look at the other parts of the neighborhoods, and we have adopted a, a larger profile for buildings in that, in that area. However, on this case, in, in this location, Mr. Mayor, the, the options for council are limited, and I believe that this represents the best of a very difficult and conflicted situation. So I would, I would recommend to council... So I would, I would recommend to council, as we did at Planning Committee, that they adopt this amendment and adopt the zoning, thereby concluding the, with some other motions, the secondary plan, which by and large, in my opinion, protects the existing four-story fabric that is so indicative of the Little Italy community. So, Mr. Mayor, that is what I would convey to council.
Thank you. Counselor Eglie?
Mark, so am I correct that the nine-story idea was originally predicated on there being the muse? And now that we've decided some time ago there wasn't going to be a muse, where does that leave the nine stories?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that question's best answered by planning as opposed to legal.
Mr. Mayor, on this particular site, this was a decision that was made last year at council, and that was not indicative of the muse for this particular site.
Correct. No, I appreciate that, but, but the ability to go nine stories so you could have traffic flow and what have you, was that not predicated on having a muse and we decided we're not going to have a muse? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Mr. Mayor, in this general area where the muse was a factor staff did evaluate, and given the fact that we are not adding the muse in, we did adjust the strategic directions report to ensure there were four stories in other areas because of the traffic and moving people around and the lack of ease of doing that. That is correct.
So you made changes in other areas, but you left this particular site at nine stories? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, this particular site is unique. It's at the end of the neighborhood. It's not in the middle of the low-rise Little Italy area, and it abuts the mixed-use main street of six stories, and there are no other residential buildings between this property and Preston Street on the north side of Norman. It was felt that this was also a unique opportunity for intensification in this particular area.
Okay, and just one, one other question. Counselor Hume had indicated that if we voted for this motion and not the recommendation, it left it open to the possibility of going even higher heights. Can you give us some indication of how high those heights might be?
Let me get Mr. Smith's microphone on, please, Matt.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, the, as was indicated by Counselor Hume, the application was filed prior to the strategic directions being approved and prior to the implementing secondary plan as before council today being finalized and brought forward. So a policy regime that the application, when it was submitted for Norman, would be considered against is the policy framework that was in place at that time. It was indicated it's a mixed-use center designation, which does allow for the highest-profile buildings to be accommodated in proximity to transit. This site is approximately three hundred meters from the Carling O-Train station. The initial application, when it first came in, was actually proposing eighteen stories, and through the process of working through the strategic directions and working through the development of the secondary plan, it was brought down to a nine-story profile, which at the end of the day, staff felt comfortable with. Miss Dent identified some of the unique circumstances associated with this site that allowed us to feel that this was appropriate, and hence the recommendation that was brought forward to committee to approve the site-specific rezoning on nine Norman. So, but it could have gone, the initial application was for eighteen. They could have made an application for something higher. At the end of the day, we felt nine was the best for the particular location.
Counselor Eglie's mic, please.
So what I said is, so if we vote against, or rather, if we vote for this motion and it passes, potentially we're looking at a situation where they could be going for an eighteen-story building as opposed to a nine-story building, correct?
That is potentially what the applicant might be seeking on an appeal if they decide to file an appeal, as was indicated by Mr. Mark. The official plan amendment application is still a live application. It's never been concluded. What they asked for under that application was eighteen stories.
Counselor Tierney?
Thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Counselor Eglie actually asked a lot of my questions, so there's a lot more clarity. If we support this, this, I heeded your warning that this will possibly supersede or kill Rayner Blouse's motion, and if we, if we do support this, this could lead us to more trouble where we could actually have higher heights. Is that what I just heard you say to Counselor Eglie?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The potential is there. I mean, we don't know at the end of the day what the property owner might decide to do. Clearly, they were comfortable with the nine-story, moving forward with that, but I can't speculate or indicate other than to say that the official plan amendment, plant amendment application that was filed by the owner sought eighteen stories. Whether they go back to that, I can't say.
Right. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Dean?
Just, just one follow-up question. Is it even possible to put an eighteen-story building on a seven-meter-wide road?
I think, Mr. Mayor, the, the unique circumstance of this property is because the property extends and occupies all of the properties on the north side of Norman, extending from the O-Train corridor to the back property line of the Preston Street properties, and as is reflected on the plan that was developed for the nine-story, the access, in fact, is being provided right behind the Preston Street commercial. So it's not a situation where they're looking at introducing additional traffic flow past the back of the Preston properties down Norman Street. Traffic would be diverting into the property, into the blow grade parking. The architect at Planning Committee also clarified that the loading activity for the current proposal, the nine-story proposal, was intended to be accommodated within the parking garage. I would anticipate if they were looking at doing a modified scheme with an eighteen-story element as opposed to a nine-story element, those same principles would apply. So it's not a situation of traffic having to go down the full length of Norman. It would be cutting into the site just past Preston Street. So, and I believe that a traffic study was submitted with the, with the original application for eighteen stories, and the indication was that the traffic could be accommodated on the road network.
Thank you.
Are there, anyone else wish to speak on this? Counselor Clark?
Traffic will be accommodated. Eighteen stories, the traffic could be accommodated. Is that what you just told me?
The traffic study that was submitted indicated that. That was reviewed and was accepted by our transportation staff. That's correct.
And what is, what are the numbers? What kind of traffic would that generate? I know it might sound like a lot, but at peak periods it might be as much as seventy or eighty, ninety cars?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers in front of me, Mr. Mayor, at this point in time. It might be in the report. If you give me a few minutes, I might be able to locate that information.
My concern is that if they're going to exit at Preston, since they can't go anywhere else, then how in the world is that going to not create a problem during peak periods?
Mr. Mayor, I just got the information on the traffic generation, and for the AM peak period, it would be a total of forty, forty trips, and for the PM peak period, it would be a total of thirty-seven trips. So the numbers are not incredibly high, and at that intersection, they would have to wait for the brakes in the traffic to make the turns onto Preston Street.
Excuse me, I guess they shut it off too soon. And this particular number, forty, relates to an eighteen-story, how many-unit building?
Sorry, that relates to the nine-story with the eighteen-story. You might add another twenty, twenty-five vehicles to that.
I'm talking about the number of units, John.
That's correct. The tower portion is only located on a portion of the property, so currently the tower is focused on the western portion for the nine-story element. That's where the eighteen-story element would go. So in terms of the additional height from nine to eighteen, given that there's also the five-story element, which I would anticipate would remain, I would expect you'd be looking at probably an additional twenty-five vehicles in the AM peak period.
That's, that's the vehicles. How many units?
I wouldn't know the number of units. I'd have to take a closer look at that.
That was the question I asked.
Sorry, sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, I, you know, I look at this stuff and I, if there's a hundred and twelve units in a nine-story, it's two hundred and twenty-four units in an eighteen-story. That speaks to me of a lot more than forty cars. However, I'm sure that the, you know, I just don't see all those people pulling thirteen feet or thirty feet, or whatever number it is, from wherever they exit their garage out to Preston Street and trying to get onto the road in the morning rush hour. That's the left turners. This, you know, I have a little trouble with traffic studies without even seeing them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a couple of comments on this. In terms of the, I can't recall who said that there was, basically this would not be an anomaly, yet I look at the map and it looks like it would be an anomaly in the whole area of Little Italy with the exception of the outskirts of Carling and Rochester and so on, which is what we've always pushed for as a council, is intensification on the fringes of the community, not in the middle. So who was it that mentioned, I'm not sure, referenced that it wouldn't stand out. Basically, all around it is four-story, is it not? Or am I misreading the color code on the map?
Mr. Mayor, it is, it is on the edge of the low-rise area, and as you can see by the map, it's surrounded by six stories. It's not surrounded by four stories. The middle part of the neighborhood is, is four stories we're identifying, but in this Norman Street area, it is unique in so much as it's surrounded by six-story buildings.
Well, I guess I'd take exception because I'm looking right across the street on Norman and it's four stories.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, correct on across the street, but in the street side of that particular block, that...
What's wrong with the microphone? Sounds like the teacher on Charlie Brown. Can we fix that? Well, any, in any event, I, I think it's, I think the, it is right across the street from four-story. You've got, you know, just down the street on George and Young, no collection of George Young in my office, four stories, and it's a dead-end street. So the difficulty I have with this and why I'm going to support Counselor Holmes and Clark's motion, think about this in your own ward for a minute. I've often gone around center town and built up areas and wondered who in their right mind approved these massive towers in the middle of a residential area that are not on the fringe, aren't on a collector lane, aren't on a regional road, but are in fact right in the middle of the neighborhood. The street is narrow. I went down there a couple of days ago to take a look. It's a very narrow street. There's already substantial density going into this neighborhood. It's a dead-end street. I think it's going to be a disaster for traffic and parking. I know from experience on Aberdeen, when I go to board meetings at Invest Ottawa, it is a nightmare trying to find a parking spot there. People are blocking people in. There's not enough curb length and so on. So I think four stories is much more compatible. I think we're being very generous in the rest of the, the plan. I think we just all unanimously voted for Counselor Hume and Holmes' motion with respect to respecting the height limit of four stories on Adeline. So it would seem to make sense we should be consistent with our votes on Norman Street. So yays and nays on Counselor Holmes' motion, please.
Counselor Alshantiari?
No, no. That's two no's, I guess. The microphone is not working, so.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Blouse?
No.
Counselor Hobbs?
Yes.
Counselor Eglie?
Yes.
Concier Minet?
No.
Counselor McCray?
No.
Counselor Shirelli?
No.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Concier Fleury?
Oui.
Concier Blay?
No.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Holmes?
Yes.
Counselor Codri?
No.
Counselor Tierney?
No.
Counselor Durash?
No.
Counselor Chernoshenko?
Yes.
Counselor Moffett?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
No.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Tenyes, fourteen nays.
Okay, so that does not pass. The next motion we have is from Counselor Holmes, seconded by Counselor Clark. If you'd like to introduce it, Counselor Holmes.
This is Young Street?
This is Young Street. That's correct.
Well, Mr. Chair, we have the same dilemma on Young Street. That is right up against the Queen's Way, but Young Street backs onto George Street. So we have fifteen stories here where the recommendation in this plan is to allow fifteen stories because it's close to the Queen's Way, but forgetting about the south of that fifteen-story building is George Street with its one- and two-story buildings on very narrow lots. So we have the same kind of dilemma here and the same kind of recommendation from both the Preston Street BIA as well as the residents of the area and the Delhazy Community Association, that we have to try and maintain Little Italy as a neighborhood that is the Italian heart of the Italian community in town. So it's the cultural center, the business center of the Italian community. So if we undermine Little Italy, we really have lost a major tourist attraction, a major reason for people going to this area to shop and eat and enjoy the ambiance and the sun that's so necessary for the health of our residents and for the businesses on Preston Street. So it is a problem, Mr. Mayor, that we have fifteen stories on Young. That really starts to crowd in fifteen stories at the north, eighteen stories on Rochester, thirty-five, forty stories down at, down at Carling. That really does put pressure on the low-rise in the area, and can we maintain those four-story low-rises if we have that continued speculation and pressure? There's no application in on that piece of land. No doubt, someone has talked to the planning department, and that's why we have that fifteen-story statement on the map, but really, there's no active application, and that really starts to undermine the, the small businesses, the small buildings on George Street, the north side of George, that are going to abut this building on Young Street. So, Mr. Mayor, we have lots of ability in this area for intensification. We have lots of room for major height and major residential and commercial usage that we don't have to put this kind of pressure on all the, all the small side streets. And I know that the BIA wrote up their planning principles a couple of years ago, visited yourself with those planning principles, and certainly four to six stories on Preston was their main, and the second important one was low-rise on all the abutting side streets, that the village remains intact, so that there is the ability to close that street for Italian week, to have parades on the street, that that remain a very active area that is a village as seen by our residents. So it is really important, Mr. Mayor, that this fifteen-story not go forward. It will start to undermine the residential to the south. As we have seen, when there's one nine-story ability on Norman, now we see requests for more nine stories. That's what happens when you have threats on and against... That's what happens when you have threats on and against the, the small residential buildings on east and west of Preston. So, I ask council not to support the 15 stories that is coming forward, but in fact, to allow that to remain the four-story that it is now. It has been four stories, this whole area has been four stories for many years, and there was a champagne, Preston Champagne study that was for, that was a development plan that was four stories. So, it's really important that...
Okay, I think we've been told that if we reboot the system, it will get rid of the crackling, so we'll do that now. It'll take two to three minutes, so if the control booth's... Sorry, councillor Holmes, but I think it's better to get this fixed now. So, we'll take a two-to-three-minute recess, and the deputy clerk will let us know when it's fixed.
The motion says six... Oh, six stories, sorry. No, you're right, you're right and I'm wrong. Okay, great. And that's... And next it'll be a road bridge.
Okay, we, there are three councillor, now it's my mic, there are three councillors' mics that are not working, councillor Holmes, Hobbs, and Minette, so if they wish to speak, if they could share one of the microphones on either side of them. So, councillor Holmes has the floor. So councillor Holmes will use councillor Fleury's mic.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Back to the discussion on the 15 stories, and how inappropriate that height is in that location. It's, it is a problem, another very narrow street with limited ability for transportation access, and it will significantly reduce the livability of the buildings directly behind on George. So, you know, it's a really inappropriate location, even though it's close to the Queen's Way. You know, our consultant decided that the Queen's Way off-ramp would make a wonderful park, so it's on our map as a parkland, even though it's 35-degree grade, and it's an off-ramp. It is a park for us, Mr. Mayor. We have very limited green space, and this little turning area is a, is a very nice, restful area in this, in this very busy neighborhood. So, I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, because of all the intensification that we're accepting, that we have in this neighborhood, that we don't have to take all the four-story capacity that is the family housing, that is the affordable housing, that provides us with some range of different uses and different buildings, how important it is to have that low-rise capacity. So, I'm asking that we do not move to the 15-story height, but that we keep the area as it is now, as it has been for 40 more years, a four-story area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Holmes. Councillor Chernoshenko, please, on this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very important moment to take a closer look at our intensification policy. For all the right reasons, we adopted an intensification policy, but somehow or other, we came to a fork in the road, and we went headlong down the road, which is "height equals intensification." And I think that's a mistake. There are places and occasions where height is appropriate, but there are many vibrant, attractive, popular neighborhoods in North America, not just in Europe, where they have achieved intensification with relatively minimal additional height. And by doing that, they've been able to preserve the character of the neighborhood, and that's what we really have to get down to here with Little Italy, is, we call it Little Italy. It has a name, it has a reputation, it has character, people go there, it has festivals, it's known, it's got signs off the Queen's Way pointing to it. But if we are not very careful with what we are adopting right now, the direction we are adopting right now, today, then, I'm not exaggerating when I say we'll have to call it the former Italy, Little Italy, that there are neighborhoods in this city that have a reputation that they will no longer deserve, because they will not be what we remembered them as. It will be a romantic, you know, memory of something that they used to be. And so, people who are now investing, builders, developers investing, residents moving into those units and moving into a neighborhood, upon discovering that they weren't the only one doing that, and that actually the neighborhood that they were moving to is already being eroded, they'll be disappointed to discover that. The value of the investment will go down. down, and we will have lost something really fundamental about the character of our older neighbourhoods. I think it is absolutely essential we preserve them. So what this work that's been going on for years now, in this area, has done, is to find the periphery, areas where it's appropriate to build tall. And unfortunately, I think we've gone too far in these cases that have been brought to our attention today, of the little streets in the middle, not on the outer edges, on the bigger roads, but right down on small streets. I think this is where we have to draw the line. We have to say, no, let's hold it to what this motion is asking, or else we will have undermined something really fundamental to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Hobbs will use councillor McCrae's mic.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to voice my support for this motion as well. There are a couple of reasons why. This really, this whole secondary plan is one neighbourhood, even though it crosses the two wards, and it is separated by the O train. But this particular property is right on the multi-use path, it's in an area today that does have a little parquet and kind of a nice feel to it. And I just feel that going to 15 stories is just, is going to ruin that, that feel in this area. And I know that it's right up against the 417, which we'd think would be, you know, contrary to wanting to have something low here. But, but it really is, it's a little park area today, and, you know, as far as I know in our official plan, we don't build high-rises right in, in front of parks, that shade parks, and, and this, this has an opportunity for, for the, for the retention of this little park area. So I very much support councillor Holmes' motion to limit this to six stories. Thanks.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Egley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll keep this brief, it's, it's getting late in the day. But my ward is the home to the Italian-Canadian Historical Centre, and I very much appreciate that facility. I go to many events there. But the last thing I want to see there is a historical exhibit about what Little Italy was. I would much prefer to see Little Italy continue to be a vibrant, alive community for everybody in the, everybody in the city to enjoy, and so I will be supporting this motion.
Does councillor Shirelli wish to speak for the Italian-Canadian community? They may not want to speak to you after your last vote councillor. Okay, so we have a motion, councillor Holmes, seconded by councillor Clark on Young Street. I'm not going to support this because, again, going back to my position with respect to the outer edges of the community, this does abut the 417 and the railway crossing, and I believe it's more appropriate to have higher density on the fringes of the community as opposed to inside. So yays and nays on councillor Holmes' motion, please.
Councillor Alshantiari?
No.
Councillor Harder? Councillor Clark?
Yea.
Councillor Blowus?
No.
Councillor Hobbs? Yes. Councillor Egley?
Yes.
Concier Manette?
Wey.
Councillor McCrae?
No.
Councillor Shirelli?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Concier Fleury?
Wey.
Councillor Blake?
No.
Councillor Thompson?
No.
Councillor Holmes? Councillor Cadri?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Councillor Dorash?
No.
Councillor Chernoschenko?
Yes.
Councillor Moffat?
No.
Councillor Hubley?
No.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Hume? Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Tanyes, 14 nays.
Okay, doesn't pass. The next is councillor Holmes, seconded by councillor Clark with respect to priority area. Councillor Holmes, if you'd like to introduce your motion, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. For those of you who have the map before you, there is a plan to invest in this area, and to do the planning department credit, they have costed out all the improvements that are planned for this area. So we look at some ability to plant more trees, we're looking at parquetts, we're looking at pedestrian bridges over the O train, all investments into the public realm that will be necessary if we're going to have 2,000, 3,000 new residents moving into this area over time. And it is to be funded by the section 37 increase in density that the official plan lets us, that the Planning Act gives us the ability to do, the 5% parkland, which will come with this increased density, and as well, an area-specific development charge that will come forward in good time, and that will be needed in order to put the funding into this area. Within the large district that we have here, from the Queen's Way down to Dow's Lake, there is a much smaller area designated called the priority area, that will be the priority for funding for the next 20 years. And that is an area that's more constricted, as you'll see on the map, it's the blue dotted area on the map, and it runs along the O train, and then picks up the station area in the south end along Carling, and goes, does both wards. And over time, there was not much money reserved for public realm improvements from the Kitchi Sippi Ward, because at the time, we didn't have the section 37 bylaw, and there was very limited ability for the city to secure the funding needed for the section, for the public realm improvements that we see coming forward. So it looks like it's going to be a good deal of money coming from the area that's in my ward to the east of the O train, the Dow Honda site, for example, is going to see significant increase. So what the, what this motion talks about in the plan is that the monies raised from inside this area, inside the development area, will go to mainly the station area, but also Evtromble Park, and that's good because my residents use that park as well. But it's a big disappointment to people in my ward, we have the least amount of green space in the city, and yet we are going to be improving parts of the ward that are going to not see, certainly the new residents will benefit in the station area, but one of the main priorities of my ward is Rochester Street, to improve the cycling and pedestrian and tree planting on Rochester, to turn that into a much more welcoming street, a complete street. So obviously, that won't now happen for 20 years because the priority area is going to take all the funding that can be realised. So, Mr Mayor, that's a problem, that the money is going to go into the area west of the O train, as well as the station area that's right on, on Carling. So it's $28 million for the first 20 years, and then, but to do the whole area, it's about $84 million, and that would include doing Carling, which is badly in need of redesign, it is an underutilised highway, ugly, no trees, skimpy sidewalks, no, no safe cycling capacity. So it certainly does need improvement, and it's great to see that it's on the list, and a very small piece of it will be done in this 20-year period. But for the 20 years, for most of the ward that I represent, there'll be very little investment, and we have lots of, lots of tree-lined streets on the map, but nothing's going to happen for 20 years on those small streets that we just talked about today, and in particular on Rochester Street. So my motion, Mr Mayor, is to say that the investment that's coming out of our fundraising for public realm be allowed to be used through the entire district, not just held to the much narrower priority area. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hume?
I just have a question for, for staff. If I understand what councillor Holmes is saying, what she's concerned about is, if we get all the develop, if all the development occurs in the 18-story profile along Rochester Street, yet we're reserving all of the section 37 benefits and all the money that comes from that for improvements in the station area where development isn't happening, or is happening at a substantially slower pace, you know, how do we get, you know, why, if the development's happening along Rochester, shouldn't we be prioritising the, the public realm improvements and trees and cycling or whatever it is along Rochester? And so, I'm not sure that this motion does that, and I thought that, and if I'm wrong in that, which is what I thought her intent was, and I would have the same concern if I were her, how does your, does this motion make sure that that, that we can adjust those priorities, and if not, what does the policy say? Or what does the policy allow?
Mr Mayor, councillor Hume is correct in that, in our secondary plan, we do have policies that will identify flexibility in order for us to apply any of our funds that we receive to the Rochester area, if that is in fact the location where we're starting to receive a lot of developments and funding is coming through. So we have flexibility within our policy to be able to accommodate that.
Okay, so what, what is the actual effect of this motion, then?
Mayor, the way I read this motion, sorry, I keep cutting out, to me, it is appearing to say that public round-party projects will be extended to encompass all sites that may be developed in the next 20 years. My, my read of this could be that the expectation is, areas within this development will be a priority, which we couldn't afford. So in terms of how we've, we've indicated this, so the development will come from, yeah. I could just stand up. So in terms of this motion, I don't know, I, that it would reflect the policies in our plan in so much as a priority if Rochester area.
Sorry, I missed that last portion of that. Try that again.
In essence, is not specific enough to identify that if priority projects, where we are receiving funding in Rochester area, that we would shift our focus to, to the public round priority, that being the area. I don't believe the, and states that the entire, become a priority, in case we can't afford all those projects.
I guess, Mr Mayor, I mean, I just asked, I understand what councillor Holmes's concern is, and I would have the same concern, if she could provide some clarity over what she expects, we think development is going to occur in the core, around the station area in, in a certain area, and therefore, we're giving priority to that. If development doesn't occur there, we've heard that it goes to, we can be, that funding can be reallocated. So I'm not sure that this is, this is necessary to ensure that when, when development occurs in specific spaces, that public realm improvements are, are, will occur in that area regardless of what the, the priority area is, if the development isn't occurring in that priority area. Is that?
Mr Mayor, that is correct. We, we do have policy that allows for that flexibility. If, if development is happening in Rochester, we'll shift our funding to Rochester.
Okay, so I guess, Mr, Mr Mayor, I, I'm looking for a little more clarity on, from the councillor, if, to what this, what she actually, from what I've heard from Ms Nedin, and from what it means, I don't really think this motion's necessary. So I, I'd like some more clarity from her, because I understand her concern about, you know, how we best can ameliorate that concern without causing the whole program to, the whole public ground program to destabilise.
The statements in the plan are quite clear that the priority area is where the funding for the next 20 years is to go. So it doesn't say clearly that if development happens elsewhere, the money will definitely go elsewhere. There is some flexibility, and it may go elsewhere, but it doesn't say definitely that if the development is happening in other areas, that that funding will be allocated to those other areas. Let's just see. So there's flexibility, but it seems to me that it is up to the planning department at the time to decide whether or not they will allow some funding into other areas, but it doesn't state specifically that that will happen where development is occurring. Perhaps we could get a comment from Ms Nedin.
Mr Mayor, I'm just looking at section 9.4.1 within our special realm, number D, we state that the city will reexamine the eligibility criteria for the development charge applications, both related, public realm improvement projects within Preston Carling District. So we interpret that to mean that wherever we are receiving, and funding that we are receiving, we would then reexamine where we put the city's investment into the public realm.
So if the, if in fact there is development that's not in the station area, but in another area, then that funding would go into that other area.
What the policy states is that we would have the ability to reexamine that, that is correct.
That doesn't say it will be spent in that other area, does it? It says you'll reexamine.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, councillor Hobbs, on councillor McCrae's mic.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I don't want to take very long, but I just want to reiterate the fact that this is one neighbourhood, according to the neighbours, and everyone uses Evtromble Park, and the priority is where the development is. In Kitchi Sippi Side, we have one new condominium completed, one under construction, one in sales, and one in site plan, and it's, and so it's not necessarily true that Rochester is where the development is, is happening. But I, I am willing to, you know, put a date on, on when we look at reviewing this priority list, if we want to do it every five years based on the development patterns. But from my perspective, I'm, I'm pleased with the staff report in terms of how it has highlighted the areas to be improved, and, and I agree with the review, and, and I agree to put a date on it if that would help councillor Holmes. But I'm not in agreement with spreading out farther away from the station's area on, on the priority list. Thanks.
Okay, does, does anyone else wish to speak to this item? Yays and nays have been called.
Councillor Alshantiari?
No.
Councillor Harder? Councillor Clark? Councillor Blowus? Councillor Hobbs?
No.
Counselor Egley?
No.
Concierge Manette?
No.
Counselor McCray?
No.
Counselor Shirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Concierge Fleury?
We.
Counselor Blay?
No.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Holmes? Counselor Cadri?
No.
Counselor Tierney?
No.
Counselor Darasch?
No.
Counselor Chernyschenko?
Yes.
Counselor Moffett?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Counselor Deans?
No.
Counselor Hume? Counselor Wilkinson?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Four yays, 19 nays.
Next is Loretta Avenue and Hickory Street. Counselor Hobbs, seconded by Counselor Hume.
Seriously, we're taking the carry? I, thank you.
Next is Counselor Hobbs, seconded by Counselor Chernyschenko.
Carried? Carried? Oh, wait. Then I have something to say about it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. What we're looking at here is a situation where we have some existing mid-rise neighbors that will have the potential of having a nine-story right in front of them. What I find is that we give a lot of consideration to low-rise residential neighbors that are in existence, but in some cases, we do not give any allowance to existing neighbors because they are in a different type of housing, namely a mid-rise or a high-rise. So what I'm asking for in this instance is to, you know, right now, the plan calls for a maximum height of nine stories. The current zoning allows for up to 25 meters. The lots are very narrow, and it really does provide a limited opportunity anyway for an effective separation distance between the buildings. And so to me, this really limits the possibility of livable, appropriate urban design. So I really feel that we need to take into account the existing built environment, whether that be, you know, the hundreds of residents in the adjacent condominium buildings that will be boxed in, or if it was single-family homes, give them the same regard. So I feel that reducing the height limit to six stories in the plan and zoning it to 20 meters in the zoning will provide us with a better streetscape character and a better urban design. It gives us an opportunity to create buildings of varying heights and a more interesting skyline. And I just think it's important to note that zoning prior to 2008 on these properties was actually 18.3 meters, so that the change to 20 meters still represents an increase over the long term. So I think also it will provide a better transition westward from Carling Station. And, you know, we've been working hard with the community association, the residents of the adjacent condominiums who are in agreement with this change to the plan to six stories. Thank you. I ask everyone for your support on this.
Sir? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? I mean, I think, I hear Counselor Hobbs, but the fact of this situation, it's a little bit different than the normal situation we see before us, because what we're actually doing here is downzoning the properties. So the zoning right that exists today on this property allows them to do what the CDP is proposing. So the CDP isn't giving these properties more development rights. The development rights that they have are, exist today. So what we're actually doing is we're downzoning them. And the test for downzoning is not, is not a simple test. It's actually, and Mr. Mark can, can help me here if I'm wrong, but the test to downzoning a property is council has to be convinced that there is an overwhelming public benefit, not a benefit to the neighborhood or the abutting property, but an overwhelming public benefit in order to have the rights that are granted, that that property currently enjoys, taken away. And so that's what we're, we're doing here. Now, Mr. Mark, you can elaborate on, on that test and where that came from for, for the benefit of council, but I think it's incumbent upon council to know what the test is when we're taking away the zoning rights that a property enjoys.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hume has correctly enumerated the test.
Yes. So I would just say, Mr. Mayor, although I'm sympathetic to what the counselor is, talking about, there is no overwhelming, large-scale public benefit that we can apply to this or that we will be able to sustain when these property owners rightly take us to the Ontario Municipal Board and say, you know, you're, you've affected, you're downzoning zoning us. So unfortunately, I don't believe that these, this motion should be supported because it hasn't met the test of, of a downzoning.
Okay. So the motion before us, yays and nays?
Counselor Al Shantiri?
No.
Counselor Harder? Counselor Clark?
No.
Counselor Blous?
No.
Counselor Hobbs?
Yes.
Counselor Egley?
No.
Concierge Manette? Counselor McCray?
No.
Counselor Shirelli?
No.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Concierge Fleury?
No.
Counselor Blay?
No.
Counselor Thompson?
No.
Counselor Holmes?
No.
Counselor Cadri?
No.
Counselor Tierney?
No.
No.
Concierge Darasch?
No.
Counselor Chernyschenko?
Yes.
Counselor Moffett?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
No.
Counselor Deans?
No.
Counselor Hume?
No.
Counselor Wilkinson?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Two yays, 21 nays.
The next item is Carr Aberdeen and George Streets, moved by Counselor Blous, and seconded by Counselor Manette. Counselor Blous, move it into this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't read the whole motion because it was read into the record at Planning Committee, and I think being read, the length of it being read once is enough. But basically, it deals with the addresses you just mentioned, 75 Aberdeen and 30th and 36 George Street. They've been consolidated. The architect came forward and made his argument that this was a suitable site for a senior or retirement home facility at nine stories. I believe, my recollection is that in the original strategic directions, the properties along the corridor, along the pathway and the rail corridor were at nine stories. That's been changed in this latest report. Now, I also, I recognize where staff has indicated they do not support the motion. They acknowledge that developments up to nine story originally would be permitted on properties along the multi-use pathway, subject to the provision of a north-south access road link on private lands and the incorporation of low-profile elements in the design to provide transition too. And the applicant has made the, the argument that this, this is a retirement home that steps down to three stories, transitions down to three stories. It replaces an existing car, not a car dealership, a car repair shop, which I've actually used in the past when I lived in the area. And I think the rationale, both from the applicant and the, and staff is before you. Thank you.
Question to staff, who is the applicant? Who is the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, there is no application on. I think this was an initiative that was being pursued based on the directions in the strategic plan. The counselor might have the answer to that, but we don't have a formal application on this property.
Sorry. Sorry, I didn't, sorry, I don't even know who the applicant is.
So who asked you?
So the, so they, they came forward at committee. They is whoever the applicant was up there, I think.
You just said you didn't know the.
Well, I don't know, I don't know the name of the person. They came forward and, and I argued all along.
So you asked me to move a motion.
No, this motion, this motion comes from Planning Committee, Mr. Chair. I know you weren't, you weren't.
The staff did not support this, so you asked it to be drafted. I'm just asking.
So, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Mayor, the, the process that we've been using, as you, as you may be aware, is we take motions at committee and we put them in the hopper and have staff review them. And that doesn't preempt the fact that they shouldn't be voted at, at council. And I, and I fully acknowledge that staff has given the rationale why they do not support this.
Maybe you're missing my point.
I am missing your point, yes.
Someone asked you to move this motion. You just didn't sit around one day and bring up this motion right forward. If someone has asked you this, who wants to build a retirement home? The simple question is, who is it?
So the individual over there, but is the architect who came forward and said, this is a plan we have, can you put this before, can you put this before committee and council?
So you met with this individual?
Yes, and I'm sure it's duly.
What's your name?
What's your name, sir? He identified himself at Planning Committee. I don't, I don't keep record of the names.
All right. So staff don't support this, and?
That's fine.
Can I ask staff for the rationale why they don't support this?
Mr. Mayor, this is in the middle of the neighborhood, four-story. It's surrounding all residential areas within this particular area. It's not appropriate for a nine-story in this location.
Chair, Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to ask city staff if any consultation was conducted with the community on the potential for a nine-story retirement residence in this location.
Mayor, no, we haven't.
Well, I just have to say, from my perspective, it's completely inappropriate to walk on a motion here to suggest we have a nine-story retirement residence when the people that live in the community have not even been consulted. And having quite a bit of experience with retirement residences in my own ward, I can tell you there's huge parking implications for this type of use. And I can't even imagine why we would even think about supporting this when the community hasn't been consulted. Thank you.
Counselor Deans, thank you. Anything else, Counselor Deans? Counselor Clark, or I think it's, is it Counselor Clark or Counselor, oh, it's Counselor Clark. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, as I read this, there's going to be an ability to put a road through, as we had stipulated back in the discussions, as I recall, sitting for several hours on the, in the Planning Committee with our Toronto specialist. And, you too, you have the same opinion. This would mean that the traffic could actually circulate without having to do a roundabout at the end. Apparently, it's intended to transition down from one side to the other. Looks to me like it might fit. It's, if, as long as there's access, like the Muse plan we had, I don't see any reason why it can't be supported. Staff, staff are suggesting that no consultation with the public would be necessary. At least, they said they didn't have any on this. I don't know whether that's the same, same thing or not. It seems to me that it's not unreasonable. And what worries me more is that we've just passed two others, Norman and the other one, which I believe are worse examples than this one.
Counselor Holmes?
Comment, Mr. Mayor? The community knows nothing about this. This has not had any circulation. There's no application into the city. It's really inappropriate to come forward at this time without all that, our normal process. It undermines the whole city's normal consultation process and public information process. So I would certainly hope that council will not vote for this motion.
Counselor Blous?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, to call this a walk-on, I actually made Counselor Holmes aware that this motion was going to be coming forward before it went to Planning Committee. Secondly, maybe staff can help me here.
I doubt it.
When the strategic directions were being developed, at one point, what was the height, what was the height that was foreseen? You know, when George Dark was doing his magic act, what was the height that was being foreseen for this? And the public consultation took place over a long period of time that you, as staff, conducted. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, the strategic directions did talk about nine stories, and that was with the Muse.
Right. But at one time, didn't, didn't Mr. Dark even suggest that heights along that corridor should be even considerably higher?
The very initial stages, yes.
Right. So there's a process here that this has gone through, and you have conducted the public consultation. So to say that this suddenly appeared here out of nowhere is not correct. There has been public consultations, and you, as staff, at the end have come back with your recommendations somewhere in the last five, six, eight weeks, whatever, there was a decision made to go from the strategic directions from nine stories down to four. And there's, this is all part of the process. Planning Committee is part of the process. Otherwise, we would just receive your report, rubber stamp it, and go home. We wouldn't be here at this time. Is that correct? Yeah, I'm just agreeing with you. I think that's what, you've done your job on this, and you've put a rationale for it. I don't agree with it, but council gets to vote on, and just like Planning Committee, the way, the way Counselor Chair Hume has set it up is that instead of hashing it out on the Planning Committee floor, there's the opportunity, it goes back to staff to review and to see if there's any merits to the, and, and I misspoke when I said "application", since there isn't an application, but somebody came forward and made their arguments why they thought this was an appropriate location to do a retirement home. That's basically it, and you've evaluated it, and you've come back with your, with your own recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, we have done a significant amount of consultation with the community.
Yes.
Agreed. And for several months now, we've made it known to the community, residents, and landowners what our recommendation was going to be in terms of location.
Right. And stakeholders don't necessarily have to agree with you. They have the option of coming to Planning Committee and making, making a pitch there. And that's, so, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if there's anything untoward that you're trying to insinuate here, because certainly, this is following the process, and let's just vote on it.
Okay. Well, I would urge members of council to vote against this. We've heard from the ward counselor. It's news to her. This is when we get in trouble. This is when we get into trouble, when these things come at us on the fly. And they haven't gone through proper process, and we end up making a decision that we'll regret later. So I would urge members to not simply go through with this, simply because some person came to a member of council and said, here, pass this. That's not a basis for us to go and change policy on the fly. So yays and nays? Madam Deputy Clerk, please.
Counselor Al Shantiri?
No.
Counselor Harder? Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Blous?
Yeah.
Counselor Hobbs?
No.
Counselor Egley?
No.
Concierge Manette?
No.
Counselor McCray?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
No.
Concierge Fleury?
No.
Concierge Blay?
No.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Holmes?
No.
Counselor Cadri?
No.
Counselor Tierney?
Yes.
Concierge Darasch?
No.
Counselor Chernyschenko?
No.
Counselor Moffett?
No.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Counselor Deans?
No.
Counselor Hume?
No.
Counselor Wilkinson?
No.
Mayor Watson?
No.
Seven yays, 17 nays.
And that's defeated? Eight. Lastly. Sorry. Court, as amended, carried. Right dissent by Counselor Holmes. Next is, there is a technical requirement to deal with the Norman Street issue that Counselor Hume has.
Ms.
Counselor Holmes. Counselor Hume on 93rd and 11th Street. I know, I need you to. Uh, next is, um, there is a technical requirement to deal with the Norman Street issue that Counsel Hume has.
Um, Mr.?
Counsel, uh, Counsel Hume on, uh, 93rd and 11th, Norman.
Yeah, it's, um, it changes, I'm looking for the, here it is. It's, uh, with respect to, um, replacement har, height and yard schedule, with one provided part of this motion, which includes all the subject man, and lands, and amends the year, year back, sorry, rear yard setbacks, and adds the 1.5-meter height requirement accordingly. Um, this was apparently missed during the, uh, during the drafting of the, uh, height schedule to, uh, to correspond with what is in the staff report.
So, uh, Counsel Hume, seconded by Counsel Harder, carried? And, uh, sorry, I, I misspoke, it was Counsel Holmes only dissenting on. Okay, so, uh, we're going back, uh, to an item that Counsel Blowus had. I apologize, on?
Uh, on the, um, the report is amended, carried, dissent by Counsel Holmes. Okay, so, item number six, front-end, uh, ending, or, sorry, front-ending agreement for modification, the Gloucester East Urban Community Stormwater Management Pond Number One and Fish Habitat Compensation, Counsel Blowus, you'd ask that we hold this?
I did, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Kirkpatrick, um, this item here was mar, uh, was walked on, speaking of walk-ons, during the, uh, development charges bylaw, and, um, it deals with a, an initiative in, in my ward, where we're taking a million dollars out for fish habitat somewhere else, I have no problem with a front-end agreement, but why would the ward councillor not be, especially, we have a cumulative effects report on, on issues in the greenbelt, dealing with, uh, creek degradation, which is part of where this pond is, and yet, the, somewhere along the way, staff negotiated with the RVC that this money should go somewhere else, um, are you able to get that information for me subsequently, we can carry this, and, uh, in terms of how this happened, uh, who negotiated this, and why the ward councillor wasn't, wasn't informed? I, I, by the way, I held this at planning committee already, and I, I wasn't satisfied with the answer I got there, so.
Mr. Mayor, I will take, uh, the, uh, the, the, the.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so, on the item, carried. Uh, next item is application for demolition and new construction at 565 and 575 Old Prospect Road, a property designated under Part Five of the Ontario Heritage Act, and located in the Rockliff Park Heritage District. Counsel Clark wished that this be held, Counsel Clark, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I, I believe planning committee did not receive a proper report from Built Heritage, says the committee, no Built Heritage Subcommittee recommendation, and yet, on the, that's page eighty-six, if you're looking at the document, and, the fact was that we had voted on this at the committee, and by a five-to-two motion, voted against it. Now, that, to me, sounds like something got lost in, in the translation. Now, the real issue was that during this whole discussion at Built Heritage, we talked about, uh, whether the Built Heritage Committee should have a discussion before the committee of adjustment, or planning committee should have a discussion before the committee of adjustment, uh, was one going to influence the other, and it was, it was kind of a mishmash, and it worries me a little that we lost the Built Heritage Subcommittee rejection of this proposal in, in the translation, and I get a note here from staff saying, well, it's procedurally correct, correct way. Well, the Built Heritage Subcommittee did not carry the staff recommendation, also did not affirmatively carry any other, well, unfortunately, I thought the message was clear, and somehow or other, it wasn't, and, uh, I'm a little concerned about drawing fine lines to ignore what the committee wanted, committee's wishes, that's just what, what did happen here.
Mr. Mayor, I can start off, and I don't know if the clerks branch want to add anything in, um, at the, at Built Heritage, they defeated the staff recommendation, but they did not carry any other recommendation in the alternative. What typically happens at planning committee, uh, is that if an application to rezone is carried, for example, and that loses, then a motion to reject the application is put before committee, and, and that's voted upon. That did not happen at this, at the Built Heritage Subcommittee, however, uh, the minutes from the Built Heritage Subcommittee were included in the planning committee package, uh, and so, as members of council read the report, they would have been informed as to what took place at the Built Heritage Subcommittee.
Then the, the follow-up question is, should this not have been, uh, should this advice not have been given to the committee, that they had to take a different, another step in the process?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the, I mean, the Built Heritage Subcommittee is a relatively new committee, and it has citizen members, uh, and so they are developing their skill base, uh, and, I don't believe the question came to staff as to what was the next step to take, I'm certain that as they move forward and gain more experience, uh, this, a motion to reject.
You're going to teach us a lesson, are you? Okay, I'll accept that. Uh, actually, I am a little more concerned about the notion of what decision gets taken, whether it gets taken before the committee of adjustment meets, or whether it gets taken after the committee of adjustment meets, uh, which is the chicken and which is the egg, uh, what is the preferred option? Planning committee deals with something before committee of adjustment sees it, or committee of adjustment sees it before planning does?
Mr. Mayor, uh, on a variance, we would want to see it go to Built Heritage first, before it goes to committee of adjustment, on a severance application, uh, because you're actually involved in the division of land, and in this instance, for two new, new dwellings, um, the idea would be that, uh, it would have gone through the committee of adjustment first, uh, and then the Built Heritage. Again, as you said, which is, the important thing is that each of them had their own mandate and parameters within which a decision and consideration needs to be had, and, uh, the Built Heritage is concerned about the heritage issues, committee of adjustment would be concerned about the matters that are settled on the planning act. At the end of the day, they both have to come together, if one fails, then the project fails.
Well, I guess I can understand that as well, but it seems to me that there will have to be some discussion taken, probably by staff, in form of a report, as to process, uh, something like you just described, only maybe a little more meat on the bones, and it probably should go to planning committee before it gets to council, because my concern is that I sat at the Built Heritage, we rejected it on a five-to-two vote, and thought that was the recommendation it would be going forward, and it didn't turn out that way, and despite the learned Counselor Mark's, uh, description of it. Well, he's learned it, there's no question.
And he's a councillor.
Well, that's a legal term, I, I don't know whether you'd know that, Maria.
They don't teach law at Western.
There's no flies over there. Anyway, my concern is that this came forward with the, what I think was an inadequate representation of what actually happened at the Built Heritage Committee. Now, whether or not that would have any impact, the Rockliff Park Heritage Conservation District statement clearly says that we don't want to create substandard lots, uh, the creation of substandard lots was the primary reason that this was rejected. Is that your phone, uh, or is it mine? We have somebody's alarm clock trying to keep me awake here. Anyway, I, I do want to know whether or not the Built Heritage Subcommittee's rejection of it, you say it was in the, in the thing, but as you well know, when you're covering a lot of items, including Little Italy, it probably would have got skipped over by the committee, other than the presentations that were made to it, and the committee on the presentations has nothing to rely on, other than the staff thinks it's a good idea to start breaking the Rockliff Park up into small lots, and that has very well upset the community, and the community association, and the neighbors.
And we have the children committee asking.
Pardon?
And we have the children committee asking.
Have what?
I'm speaking, Judge, my name's.
Pardon?
Telling you, I'm talking to your, to your questions.
What'd he say, honey?
Thank you very much, everybody.
Can you not hear me?
And the, and the mic is actually working, which is great. I didn't have to yell.
You don't need a mic.
Bottom line is, um, Counsel Clark, uh, at planning committee yesterday, had you been there, you would have heard that discussion happen, where, I'm not saying that to rub it in at all, but he would have heard very clearly that both myself and Counsel Hobbs, who are both, were the two votes against it, or for it, at the Built Heritage, speak to the fact, it was well-recognized by the Chair, Peter Hume, that in the minutes, it was reflected, the problem that we had at the Built Heritage is that no matter how hard I tried to get the, the, uh, the discussion to happen about heritage, built heritage, the people that came out to speak consistently went to the severance, and to the fact of dividing the lots up, which, we really didn't have very much discussion about the heritage qualities, which was interesting, because we had a very good report from our staff, uh, from Ms. Collins, and, which laid out everything very clearly, and the people that came out, with the exception of talking about a few trees and a hedge, not one person commented at the Built Heritage on where the, how the gables were, what the material was being used, any of the things that are within the mandate of the Built Heritage. At the end of the day, the fact it's a Subcommittee is just that, and the Subcommittee takes in the information on the heritage aspect and delivers that to the, um, to the planning committee. Would it have had more clout, had, uh, Member Smallwood, for example, um, put forward a motion that said that they reject it? I, I, I don't believe so, I don't believe so at all, because we very clearly said, this was it, five-to-two was the vote, and unfortunately, uh, the planning committee did deal with the heritage aspects of it. Chair Hume said repeatedly, folks, when you come forward, please keep your comments to heritage, you will have an opportunity, as will Counsel Clark, or as will any of the people in the community, or members of the Built Heritage, you don't agree, to go to the committee of adjustment meeting, which I believe is next week. That's the way the process is, and also, I, when I had the applicant come forward, or, um, Mr. Casa Grande, speaking for the applicant, I asked him why they weren't going in that process. Clearly, there was a confusion there, because when he first said to, said to me, you know what, um, Chair, we, um, traditionally are told by the heritage folks to come there first, and actually, can, Ms. Collins did go, yeah, because now we know that there is a fine line, the fine line says, you do come there before committee of adjustment, unless it's a severance you're talking about. So, all in all, um, are there lessons learned, um, making, in case of a rejection, we'll have to have a motion, or we'll all have to tell the people to put forward a motion, but other than that, I think that this has been fairly heard. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I probably, sitting up in my office, should have had the meeting turned on so I could come down and join the debate, but I was, uh, riveted to the 200 emails that I got in the last week. In any event, I guess that the answer for the community is to go on committee of adjustment and make, make representations about the severance. On the other hand, I still think this process needs to be better described, and, uh, I think that the staff could report on that with, uh, with a view to trying to look at sequencing some of this stuff. Thank you. Thank you.
So, uh, on the item, carry, okay, dissent from Counsel Clark. Thank you very much, and we go to item eighteen, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw, 2008 dash two fifty, thank you, Counsel El Shantiri, um, zoning bylaw amendments, we have a motion by Counsel Blowus, seconded by Counsel Blay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, this motion is to reinstate the Cumberland Transit Way, at least on paper, uh, it was taken off of map thirty-six, uh, I think there was some rationale that staff had, but I think we feel more comfortable if it's there, it's had an EA done already, it's been in the transportation master plan, and even though it was pushed back in the current TMP, I think we feel more comfortable with it being there.
Staff comment on this, please?
Mr. Mayor, staff supports the motion.
Okay, uh, other comments on the motion, carried? Thank you. On the, uh, report as amended, carried? So this, uh, we now have an amendment on the St. Patrick Street Multi-Use Pathway, oob, Counsel Fleury, seconded by Counsel Clark, Counsel Fleury, if you'd like to introduce it, please.
Mr. Mr. Mall, it's simply a false, committee where sources of funds needed to be identified, and they are added to the motion.
On the motion? Carried, on the, uh, I'm sorry, Counsel Harder?
Yeah, thank you, I mean, I, I think that we all agree that looking at opportunities to take care of some missing links at the time are important, but I don't think that we should look, um, lose the fact that we have some missing links which have not been funded. I have one, for example, that's only going to cost a thousand dollars, I shouldn't, I mean, if there's that kind of money sitting around in those funds, I should be able to easily have a thousand dollars to provide access from a road to another one, so I just wanted to be on the record saying that, it shouldn't.
Okay, we have, um, uh, we passed the amendment on the motion as amended, carried. Uh, the next item is disposition of items approved by committee under delegated authority. Uh, on this item, colleagues, we have a motion from, uh, Counsel Egli, seconded by Counsel Clark, this, as you know, at Fedco was the sale of surplus land to the state of Qatar, uh, but they require a council motion, uh, their, the government of the state of Qatar requires a council motion, so, in essence, it's a, a belt-and-suspenders motion, and we're, uh, we've already approved it, so on the motion by Counsel Egli, carried. Motion, uh, to adopt reports, Counselor Thompson, please.
Your worship, uh, moved by self, seconded by Counsel Hume, and Eggco's and Rural Affairs Committee Report Forty-three, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Forty-five, Joint Finance and Economic Development Committee and Audit Subcommittee Report One, Planning Committee Reports Seventy-three and Seventy-four, and Transportation Committee Report Thirty-nine be received and adopted as amended.
Carried? Thank you, Counsel. Uh, motions, uh, which notice have been previously given, Counsel Thompson, as a deferral motion?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Moffett, uh, that, uh, I had a motion in regard to funding for the Osgood Youth Association, subsequent to that, uh, notification, I met with the city treasurer, uh, the chief of staff, Sir Japan, and Dan Schen, Schenge, Director Voya, myself, and we were working on some, uh, additional funding for that, and, uh, I'm just requesting that we, uh, uh, move this to, uh, to another council meeting.
Okay, on the motion, uh, to defer, carried?
Carried, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Thompson. Uh, motions requiring suspension of the rules, we have, uh, three motions, the first one is moved by Counsel Wilkinson, seconded by Counsel Blowus on adult crossing guards, on suspension, carried.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, we, just as at budget time, that if the crossing guard studies showed there were ones that meant warrants, that we would consider funding four of them, twelve actually meant the warrants, but I'm putting forward the motion that the top four, uh, receive twenty-four thousand dollars from the corporate unsecured account, uh, that was, been approved by the finance department to do that. The future.
Counsel El Shantiri, on the? Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask staff about this, because it, this one, it means we're adding something to the budget without trying to find alternatives to that, either we are squeezing more out of the department, or I'm not sure where the money will be, just like the good old days would add to the budget, and then one budget time, then we scramble to find where we're going to get the money, so, I just need to hear from treasurer, is, you know, what's that mean to, to, is it in the budget, is it budgeted, and where's the money come from?
Um, Mr. Mayor, no, it isn't in the budget, it's funded from a one-time source in 2014, so it will become a pressure in 2015 to continue with this.
with this.
Well, this is, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure about, but I really have a problem when we, we're just walking with something like this in the last minute without proper committee going to, so I will not be supporting this motion.
So, the difficulty with this motion is that the original motion at budget was if the Department of Public Works would come up with the funds. And my understanding is because of the snow situation, Public Works does not have the money. So, we're already in breach of what we agreed to as a council. And secondly, this is coming from unforeseen. And third, there are, I believe, eight other school areas that should have this funding. So, I'm having some difficulty with these kinds of motions that come forward, because quite frankly, it does put undue pressure on us next year. There are eight schools that are being left off. I question whether we should be even in the business. This should be a school board responsibility, quite frankly, as it used to be. So, you know, I'm, is there a yes and nays? Okay, Counselor Harder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for saying that, okay? Because that is absolutely the truth. The school boards, through their OSTA, have put together a transportation package and cut back on delivering service to all the kids in the two largest boards, the two English boards, which has put pressure on us to have to have these situations to make it safe for their kids, our kids, to walk on our streets to their schools. And I'm sick and tired of it. I've got a school that just opened in Barhaven, I have actually more than one, but one in particular is on Cambrian Road, which has been under so much construction traffic with Half Moon Bay, et cetera. And the bottom line is, is that I offered staff, and none of them are here, but I offered staff to pay, and I've been so concerned about it out of my office budget, I was going to bring a report forward and say, can I? But you know what they said? It will put pressure in September for you to do that. So, I've been trying to do all kinds of things, but I think that we need to have that meeting, that discussion with the school and say, okay, now that you're justifying and rationalizing your transportation money, kick some back in and pay half the price and we'll have a lot more crossing guards, which will be in the best interest of the taxpayers and their little children in this city. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Wilkinson.
Just to close, I think, Mr. Mayor, there's some misunderstanding. There was some motion at budget time, I raised it at that time, and that what the Treasurer told me was if there was money in the transportation budget, they'd do it, but if there doesn't, there was plenty of money in the unforeseen to handle $24,000. We've just passed $400,000 for something that wasn't in the budget, and this is something that is very important for safety. None of these are in my ward, by the way. I said, take the top four. It's a principle that I'm speaking to, that we should try to make it as safe as possible it gets to go to school. And since the school board won't and say they won't do anything off their school properties, if we don't do it, nothing happens. I don't think that's a good idea either. So, this is a minuscule amount of money in our budget, Mr. Mayor, and I think we should be, be supporting it. And we should be able to pay for it ourselves if we want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, part of the problem I have with this whole thing, and I agree, we need school crossing guards, especially as the busing gets canceled, but it's actually growing. It's not getting smaller, it's getting bigger, because what we're finding out now is when they're canceling and forcing the children to walk farther, they're forcing them to walk across major roads. Like, I have one right now, they're crossing, going to be crossing Bank Street. It's major. So, now we're going to need to put a signal in, which is actually transferring the cost from busing onto the municipality. And I think what we really need to do is have a meeting with the school boards to discuss the overall policy, because we can't just continue to take on to the municipal tax bill costs that are indirectly related to school. And they certainly get a lot of taxation. So, I think we need to talk about who pays what. So, I know it's a bit of a side issue compared to what Counselor Wilkinson is saying today. I guess, just one question on Counselor Wilkinson's motion, is there any time sensitivity around that motion? Does that mean if we say no today, that there'd be no crossing guards there in September? Or is there an opportunity to look at it and then come back before a decision point?
My understanding is that, Mr. Keats here, so I believe, Larry, can you tell us if it's, if this has to be passed state? Because your last council meeting is August 27th or something, and this would be, to be having place for September.
We, we have a list of people that we were looking at for crossing guards, but I'll have to come back and give you a timeline for how long it would take to put in place. If we get it in August, it might be a rush for September.
Counselor Deans, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shirelli.
Thank you, your worship. Well, we used to have a council-schoolboard periodic liaison committee, where we used to deal with issues that, that sort of crossed our responsibilities. And I know, so, so when we had the OSTA change that has resulted in a lot of people being upset by the new challenges of getting kids to school, it would have been useful to be able to work with them. I'm just wondering to what extent you have worked with them on the crossing guard issue in relationship to the, the new transportation plan that they have.
Through the mayor, yes, we work with OSTA, we have representation with their group, we have been participating, we have looked at the changes that are being implemented and the number of crossing guards that that would have to add to the system to meet warrants. So, we are participating with that review.
Okay, because I've been, I've been at school board meetings where I've heard the, the same speech that Counselor Harder gave, I've heard given by school trustees who say, the city has a responsibility to deal with these kids who are on city streets. You know, the fact that they're going to a school is irrelevant, they're pedestrians and they should be dealt with properly. And I know, back in the 90s, I think that, that great council team of Counselor Alex Cullen and Counselor Jim Watson got us into, into this. And I'm just wondering what we're doing to, to deal with the, with, with the cross issue here.
Through the mayor, we have, as, we have talked, we have identified locations through the process that will need crossing guards, and we have provided a cost for that.
Yeah, but, yeah.
The money, if, for us, we're going through the budget process, that's our only ex.
Because for, but for them to save a few thousand dollars by disrupting everybody's schedules, and then we have to pay to deal with the extra kids as pedestrians.
It's part of the, we're discussing that, with, so, we're looking at some of that savings as a potential for revenue, but.
Colleagues, I think I have a solution. I would recommend that a member of council directs me to meet with the school board chairs over the course of the summer and try to find a cost-sharing agreement.
That's a good idea.
Better agreement, because I think there's fairness on both sides. We have a responsibility, but so too do the school board. So, if anyone's willing to move that, I'm quite prepared.
I'll move it. I'll move it.
Yes, so, if Counselor Harder will move it, seconded by Counselor Blay, as a former trustee. Yes, all right, so, the motion would be.
What are you telling us, Counselor?
Be directed to meet with the four chairs and the four directors of education, together with the Chair of Transportation Committee, to discuss cost-sharing arrangements on adult crossing guard program. Counselor Shad Cadre.
Mr. Mayor, that conversation has to be much more broader than just the crossing guard program, because even just the snow removal on sidewalks in the area where there's a school, that's going to put extra pressure on our operations department going forward. So, I think it's a much broader issue than just crossing.
Other common issues, which is a catch-all. On that, carried, all right. Well, no, that's replacing the crossing guard motion. All right, next motion is Counselor Wilkinson, Kanata North Expansion Area.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, this development study for the Kanata North Expansion Area is underway and a component parcel has not yet been included within the Urban Tree Conservation Bylaw. Therefore, be resolved that the rules proceed to be waived amid the addition of the following matter to the agenda for the July 9th meeting of council. Whereas Ottawa City Council has enacted an urban tree conservation bylaw for protection of trees on private property in the urban area, and where said bylaw has previously extended by council to apply to the designated urban expansion areas to ensure the protection of trees and natural heritage villages as the city grows. And was Area 1C in Kanata North was added to the urban area as a result of the Ontario Municipal Board decision in 2012 and has not yet been included in the bylaw. Therefore, be resolved that the Urban Tree Conservation Bylaw be amended effective July 9th, 2014, to apply to Area 1C, as shown on the Ralph By Schedule C, attached as Schedule One, as Document One, which I don't have in front of me.
Okay, so, suspension of the rules on this motion.
Carried.
On the motion is presented by Counselor Wilkinson, seconded by Counselor Al Shantiri.
Carried.
Carried, thank you. The next motion is requirement by Hydro Ottawa or Energy Ottawa Inc. with respect to the placement of rooftop solar energy panels on the Walter Baker Center. On suspension, carried, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor McCray on the motion, carried. Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules? Notices, a motion for consideration of subsequent meeting, avis de motion pour examiner réunion subsuequente. Motion to introduce bylaws, Counselor Thompson and Hume, and I believe, is there an amendment that he will refer to on the oral experience?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hume, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, first and second reading be read, and third readings be read and passed, with the exception of the bylaw listed as a bylaw of the City of Ottawa to amend by law number 2008-250 of the City of Ottawa, to change the zoning of lands known municipally as 93, 95, 97, 99, 103, and 105 Norman Street.
On the motion, carried. Confirmation by law, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, that the following be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of July 9th to 2014.
Carried. Any others, any written requirements adjourned, Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hume, and this is my last term, opportunity to do this, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of July 9th be adjourned.
Carried. To remind members of council that the shuttle service to the city place of lands now will be leaving sharp at 5:50 from the Eagle River Street. Change to 5:50. You get there earlier, it will be earlier.
My job was done when the design was finished. I'm just the, I'm just the guy who, you know, works, Jim's clipping the ribbons.
I didn't go to the training camp, so.
Yeah.
You should do that next year, that, don't lose that idea, it's like plans for some of those.
It's not a traffic light.
CCOC is going to.
They realize.
Yeah, ironic, you know?
Oh, you'll never be able to get out of here.
How would you keep that gap open?
How's it going? Except I can't interrupt you while you're doing.
I'm for sure.
I know.
There are no curves, eh?
My daughter is in the.
Her posture tonight.
My daughter is in.
See how, see how quick your last bit makes you.